Evening, everyone. I would like to call the Concord Carlisle School Committee to order. And Ms. Rankin, can I ask you to call the Concord School Committee to order?
Oh, I'll call the Concord School Committee to order.
All right, and we are headed into executive session. So I would entertain a motion if someone would care to read that.
I think, Court, in honor of your last day, I think you should go for it.
You should be in charge of all motions tonight, right?
In charge of all motions, okay. Without any emotion whatsoever. So quite seriously, happy to be here. And at this time, on behalf of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee, I move that the Regional School Committee enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, and purpose seven to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically MGL 30A, Section 22A and F, with regard to the review and approval of executive session minutes from June 13th, 2023, September 26th, November 7th, December 19th, 2023 in all cases, and then on to 2024, January 9th, January 23rd, February 27th of 2024 minutes. And under purpose two, under which the June 13th, 2023, September 26th, 2023, executive sessions were held. And under purpose three, under which the June 13th, 2023, January 23rd, 2024, and February 27th, 2024, executive sessions were held.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And we will roll call.
Booth, aye.
Morano, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Rankin, aye.
Whit, aye.
And with that, we will adjourn.
Do we want to do?
Well, I think we should do Concord too at the same time.
Yeah.
So I move that the Concord School Committee will enter executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Concord Carlisle.
Whoops.
Nope. Let's correct that. Collective bargaining with the Concord Teachers Association. And purpose seven to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22A and F, with regard to the review and approval of executive session minutes from June 13th, 2023, June 20, 2023, July 20, 2023, September 26th, 2023, November 7th, 2023, November 19th, 2023, January 9th, 2024, January 23rd, 2024, February 27th, 2024, and March 15th, 2024 minutes. And under purpose two, under which the June 13th, 2023, June 20, 2023, July 20, 2023, September 26th, 2023, executive sessions were held. And under purpose three, under which the June 13th, 2023, November 7th, 2023, January 23rd, 2024, Feb. 27th, 2024, and March 15th, 2024, executive sessions were held.
Woo, second. And roll call.
Booth, aye.
Morano, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Rankin, aye.
With that, we will see you when we are done third exec sessions. Thank you.
To the school committee meeting, I wanted to just make some quick remarks before we start our meeting to let everybody know that we had elections and Tracy Morano was re-elected. So congratulations to Tracy. And we will also be joined after town meeting in a few weeks by a new member named Andrew Hercheck. So congra-- oh, and Andrew's here. Congratulations to Andrew. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Tracy.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so tonight, we are really excited to have the amazing CCHS Girls State Championship Swim Team with us. So we are going to invite our swim team members and Coach Goldberg up here because it's really exciting. Oh, Coach Moss is here. See, Moss is here. You're hiding on me. Those are the only two coaches? Oh, no, Coach Donovan's here. Okay, wait, I see them all. And I have a new coach that I don't know.
Shane Conroy.
Oh, nice to see you. I love swim team, sorry. I really love swim and dive. I'm just going to say it. The love is really strong. So you can come on up so we can recognize you. Okay, so we've read a lot about you. We've read about you in the bridge. I understand that you have a first-place relay team. Three of them. So could you tell us about your first-place teams? And I know you also have a state champion diver amongst the group. She's not here. Is she? No? Is she?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, so.
Here, but we also have two state champion swimmers.
All right, so let's hear it.
We had all three of the relays, the 200 medley relay, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay, all won their events at States. We had Maisie O'Donnell as our diver who won States this year. Alana Lean won the 200 IM at States. And Elizabeth Riley won the 50 freestyle at States.
Excellent. Now, I have a question. When was the last time the girls' swim and dive team won a state champion?
About two months ago.
Exactly. So the first time in program history.
That's really exciting, you guys.
Can we hear from maybe some of your swimmers and divers?
Sure. Tell us what made it possible.
Hello, my name is Lily. I'm a senior, and I was lucky enough to be along for this ride that we had this season. It was amazing. We worked really hard, like everyone individually, and also as a team because we were able to put together some amazing relays. And we were able to win all three of our relays at States, which is no small feat. And it's very, I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud of what everybody was able to accomplish individually and as a team.
Awesome, awesome.
Kind of on top of that, it was really awesome getting to see like our team come together this year because we not only won States, but we also had sectionals and DCLs, which had all of our swimmers there. So not just the people who had qualified for major events, which was really awesome because you got to see the whole team like experiencing these big events together. It was really amazing. First time, pretty good way to end a senior year.
Oh, definitely.
Well, I mean, it was a really fun season. I know from day one, we were talking about how this was a really special team and that we might have a chance to do something that the program's never done before. And I think both the coaches and the swimmers, we did a great job just like, you know, every day, knowing that that's what we wanted, coming in as a team, and still having fun while we were doing it. So I know I definitely enjoyed myself, and I think everybody else probably did too. So, yeah.
I have another question. Anyone break a record this year in this group?
Yeah.
I broke the 500 free at States. And it was previously Alana Lean's. So I was just happy to break a record. And then Alana was like, she was the first person to congratulate me. So it was just a really fun experience to have.
All three of the relays, all three of the relays broke the school record. And was it a free?
Alana broke the 200 free one.
Oh, yeah, and then Alana broke the 200 freestyle record earlier in the season. So five, five school records.
So awesome.
Amazing.
So awesome.
Fantastic. Love it. So we have a little surprise for you tonight. Oh, yes, Coach Moss. I have to call you Moss.
Coach Goldberg's very shy, but he's.
I forgot.
But you're not.
Hi, Jerry.
He's also the Globe School.
Yeah, thank you.
He's also going to the Mr. Madison Coaches Hall of Fame this year.
Yeah.
Good job.
I know, he's a little red. And before we bring our surprise on, the swim and dive team has historically been like just really great role models in the school. And I'm just glad to see that continue with the leadership of the coaches, but also the students that all of you are. And it's really been wonderful to see. I mean, this is 10 years and counting that I can recall. I don't want to age myself. But it really has been one of the programs that people really value significantly because of the characters that all of you have. So thank you for that. Thank you for being leaders in the school. And now, we have our state representative, Simon Cataldo, here. Were you going to come up with something? We're going to give you a microphone. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Tracy. One of the really cool parts of my job is that when someone or a group does something special in the district that I represent, Concord Carlisle, Act of the Chumford, I get to present a legislative citation. So this is a citation from the House of Representatives, and I'm going to read it in a second. But really briefly, I just wanted to say the pride that I share with so many, with your parents, who I know, your family members, who are so proud of you. You know, in this citation, it is about swimming and diving, but it's also about the fact that you were the best at something. And all of the work, the persistence, the determination, the collaboration that went into that, that's something that you're going to be able to carry forward in all of your endeavors in your lives. And so I'm so excited for you that you've now done this and you've learned how to be really great at something. That's something that not everybody can set. And I urge you to take that as you go on and do many, many different things, to take that into areas that serve others. And on that note, I wanted to let you know, if you don't already know, that you have a special skill that is sorely needed in the Commonwealth. You may have heard that we have a very significant and fairly dire shortage of lifeguards in Massachusetts. And there have actually been in recent years several tragedies, several accidents. So as you go on in your lives and you have this long list of really cool and important and valuable things that you're doing, I hope that you consider one of those things. If you have any questions, one of those, that aspect of what you can do. If you have any questions about that, you should feel free to reach out to my office. So now I'm just going to read to you what this says and present it to your coach. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the Concord Carlisle High School girls, swimming and diving team, in recognition of winning the MIAA Division One State Championship. The entire membership of the House extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Dated today, signed by House Speaker Ron Mariano and eager state rep. Congratulations, and thanks for letting me share some of this time."
So we are more than proud of you, and thank you so much for sharing your everything with us. I mean, your, the things that you told us tonight. But we have loved watching you on social media because you actually have great social media too. And you have a great photographer that maybe will share some of the pictures with Dr. Hunter so she could maybe post them on her social media.
Absolutely.
So thank you for coming, and we wish you the best. Yeah, thank you all. So proud of you so much. Now, you can feel free to stay. It's kind of my joke at every meeting. Feel free to stay, but also feel free to go. And we'll give you a moment to leave if you would like to go. Don't forget to thank your parents for driving you to swim practice.
More recognition.
I'll let you do this recognition. So we have two recognitions tonight. For those of you that are joining us, it's a very exciting.
When you cancel a meeting, it doubles up.
Double recognition.
Makes our meetings better.
They need mics on one side.
Yes.
Cynthia's got them, I think. Thank you, Cynthia, sorry.
Okay, so this evening, we also have, Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Kerry.
Principal Cameron from the Concord Middle School here with some of his Playbook Initiative leaders. So if you might, Mr. Cameron, talk to us about what we're here to learn about this evening.
Of course. Thank you so much for having us. We are missing one. So we have Leila Smith, who is here in spirit. She just emailed me. She's in traffic. Coming back from Boston. She doesn't look like she's going to make it. She is a big part of the video, though, that we're hoping that is going to be shown in just a couple of minutes. To give a little background before the video is shown, standing in front of you are nine eighth graders who are Playbook student leaders who came to Concord Middle School in the year 2021, fall of 2021. And we were in our third year of the Playbook Initiative, which is our anti-bias, our bias prevention, anti-discrimination program at Concord Middle School. And when they came in as sixth graders, we were going into year four. But it was a program that we were offering our student body an opportunity to be a part of. So it was volunteer, raise your hand. Who wants to be a part of this workshop? And we had a goal those first three years of the playbook to try to train about half of our student body. So we were running between three and four different workshops of about 30 to 40 kids apiece. We quickly found out, though, the students that were raising their hand and wanting to be a part of this movement were students that were upstanders already. And our elementary schools were doing such a great job at really empowering upstanding, you know, citizenship. And we kind of looked at each other and said, we need to go deeper. And this group of eighth graders, when they were in sixth grade, decided to take the playbook school life. And it was three years ago when we decided to cancel all classes and do about a four-and-a-half-hour workshop of the playbook. That was when they were in sixth grade. So there are 10 of about 30 sixth-grade playbook student leaders two years ago when this group was in sixth grade. And they've carried forward the last few years. And now they stand here in front of you as 10 of 87 playbook student leaders that currently have a playbook at Concord Middle School. I also want to just share that the way it's changed since they've been in sixth grade is when they were a playbook student leader in sixth grade, they were asked to go into an advisory group and lead for about four hours the playbook program. When we surveyed the students, when we surveyed the faculty and staff, when we surveyed the members, the leaders, we quickly found out that was too long. And we were trying to do it all in one day in the beginning of the year, and it wasn't sustaining itself. This important work wasn't sustaining. So even though it was a lot harder and, you know, the day of training felt good to kind of get it over with, right? We are now, every three months, going back to the advisory group to do the playbook. So even last year, there was a one-day workshop that the entire school stopped everything to do. And this year, this group of playbook student leaders, along with about 75 other, are going into an advisory group every three months. In fact, they're going back to the advisory group that they're assigned two days from now for a quarter for the playbook, the religion scenario. So I wanted to give a little backdrop because the video does share that we are in year six, but it also celebrates a culmination of three years' worth of leadership by the student group that started when, again, they were in sixth grade.
Okay, I'm on technology, so let's see how this. Well done. Well, I'm a little worried about the sound, so.
The middle school students in Concord stepping through some important life lessons. Student leaders with the Playbook Initiative spent Thursday leading discussions about race, religion.
There we go.
Almost there, almost there.
I don't know why it didn't screen share that. Let's try again.
Screen before you share.
Let's try that. Now I have no bit, no sound. Now I have no sound.
No sound, okay. Hold on.
Your sound on your.
Can you just talk amongst yourselves for a minute?
But middle school students, such an important time. So great to do that when they're that. The middle school students in Concord stepping through some important life lessons. Student leaders with the Playbook Initiative spent Thursday leading discussions about race, religion, and gender orientation. They also played out different scenarios that were written by students. It's all part of an anti-discrimination and anti-bias program run by Project 351 and the Celtics Sharemark Foundation, which was inspired by the team's 2016-17 roster. But middle school students, such an important time. So great to do that when they're that age.
Right, yeah. It's nice to see that they're making that a priority.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
This is giant, reaching my face in the back.
If you make a mistake in talking, just take a breath. Millions of people.
Yeah. So when I was in sixth grade, the Playbook Initiative program was just a way to get out of school. But now, I see it as a way to really show others that it's good to be a leader.
So it was a little more intimidating in sixth grade, but now it's like easier to speak to others and explain like problems in our school.
The playbook was an opportunity that I saw that I could take a chance and see if I could make the school a better place. And now, being an eighth grader, I think that it's still an opportunity to fix anything wrong going on in today's school.
I'd say in sixth grade, it was kind of like an opportunity. Become a leader. Definitely going to middle school is like, I've always wanted to be like a teacher when I was older, so be able to kind of like supervise my peers. And I think going to eighth grade, that still resonates with me.
I think it's important, even if it hasn't brought direct change, it's brought awareness to a lot of people.
Playbook has been very effective, actually, and lots more people have been signing up.
I think they're trying really hard, and you should be able to appreciate that our school is able to provide this for us.
Even though they might not like realize it, this training has like an effect on everybody.
I feel like if we stop now, that's just like proving other people's point that the school does not care about this problem when they do.
I think that to improve those situations, I think the examples that we are pulling when we're explaining these to other students could be a little more realistic.
Because the playbook teaches people to be aware, we need an outlet for that. And we need a very accessible outlet for that.
I think the playbook could probably be more expansive. I think the elementary schools definitely should be involved. And I think it should not be just a middle school thing. I think high schools should also engage in more of an anti-bias program.
We should do like more like scenarios, just like broaden it more.
That's a good question. It's just making me think that maybe there should be rules in place stronger, if that makes sense. But like, at the same time, the school can only do so much.
I do kind of feel discouraged that it hasn't done more. We really hope that the playbook can make, change people's mind and make people see their mistakes because sometimes you're blind to what you're doing yourself.
Concord Middle School is trying their best to make these learning habits fun and taking us places, making home bases. They're truly trying to help these problems that happened in the past.
I think that there are still going to be beliefs, no matter what we do. And I think that it's important to teach people awareness so that there's less of that.
Have you heard of racist or antisemitic incidents? Only a couple. And I think the playbook has actually helped and lowered that number significantly. I feel like the playbook has empowered people to actually act out upon these incidents of hate.
What I took away from the Ideas Conference is that our school does a lot more things to stop the hate and discrimination that's going on. And when the students that went to the conference along with me, when we brought up the Playbook Initiative, no one knew what we were talking about, and no one did it. I found it really cool that our school is taking a hold and a stand of doing this. This award makes me feel really special and really cool that I'm getting an award for being in a program for as long as I have been, for three years. I didn't think this was going to happen. I just thought we would get like a pat on the back. But I'm glad we got an award. And I think it's awesome that we're getting recognition for being a leader and for standing up for something that we think is wrong and that should be stopped. This really makes me feel like our thing that we have done, I've done for three years, really came to an impact. I'm just really happy that it's, I think things have been changing in our community.
It makes me feel really proud that I've been a part of this for so long. I think that it's really important to bring about change. It's kind of a memento for me as well, along with like, it's an award. And that's really important for me because then I can look back and say to myself, like, I brought this change around. And I did this as an important action to make the world better.
This award is very empowering, and it makes me feel like I've actually done something to help this school. And I'm very happy that I've been given this award. But I feel like many other people deserve this too.
This award makes me feel so proud of myself that I was able to come this far and that I really stuck with it every year. Because like, at some points, I was like, oh, I really don't feel like going into doing the playbook today because like, maybe I was anxious. But I feel so happy that I was able to stick with it. And I was, I did it, and I'm really proud of myself.
This award makes me feel like seen. And it makes me feel that like, I actually like made a little bit of a difference here and like spreading awareness about these like acts that aren't kind.
So to just to offer the context that is a little bit of part of almost like the hidden curriculum, just making an assumption everybody knows. So the Boston Celtics have a foundation called the Shamrock Foundation. And this program, about eight years ago, was born from the Shamrock Foundation. They partnered with another organization called Project 351. Project 351 is an organization that works deeply with eighth grades all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So Shamrock Foundation, Project 351 partnered together and kind of just threw it out there to some middle schools and high schools. They empowered a high school leader from CC, who just kind of cold emailed me in, I think maybe my second year, so she wasn't even a former student of mine. To be honest, Boston Celtics was a hook, you know? So she put that in the subject line, which was very smart. Maybe she did know her audience. I answered her, and just to be clear, her ask was, can you fill this out and write a letter by midnight tonight? And that was December, I believe, of 2017, if I have that correctly, when I connected with the Celtics about three years ago, saying that we were taking this school wide, thanks in part to the eighth graders that were, again, sixth graders three years ago. They were like, ah, that's insane. That's not at all what we thought any school would ever do. And when I shared with them that that group of kids is graduating Concord Middle School, and they weren't only successful in their sixth grade year, they were successful in their seventh and their eighth grade year as well. They were like, we don't know what to do to honor them and to recognize them. And I said, well, I do. Let's go to a game, and let's be honored tonight. And they were like, oh, we'll do a plaque. But what I thought was amazing about that video is the poise, the leadership. You know, when they were being interviewed, you know, you could close your eyes and hear college students answer. But when they were given the award, the kid came out. I don't know if you saw that. I certainly saw that, and I thought that was very special. So this is an opportunity for us to not only recognize what we've done the last six or past three years when we went to school wide, but we hope you also saw in the video, there's still so much more work that needs to be done. We have to go deeper. You're not only standing, these students are not only standing in front of you as leaders, but they're standing in front of you having been witnesses and even victims of incidents of hate that have happened either online or at the middle school. And we tried to be really real, for lack of a better word, in that video, and we hope that you felt that. There was an element in the video, of course, where we're looking to celebrate the work that has been accomplished, but also, this group has empowered me to go deeper with the 89 Playbook student leaders that will continue and track on with us.
You know, none of this happens without really great leadership. And Justin told you how the story started. But what a leap of faith and what a vision that so far exceeded what the Celtics or anyone else could have imagined. And he's super humble about it, but this wouldn't be what it is without his vision and real belief that kids could change the culture themselves. We just had to give them the tools and the training and the language, and it's happening. So thank you, Mr. Cameron. We're just as proud of you as we are of all the kids and all the work that's been done.
I just want to say to you kids, I mean, especially since so many of your parents are here, what a testament this is to your character. This is something you elect to do, you choose to do. No one's asking you to do it. And I just think that speaks volumes about who you are and what you mean to the community. And I mean that really wholeheartedly. I know some of you, so, you know, I feel particularly moved by that. And Justin stole my thunder. I was actually going to say, if you closed your eyes, you sound like adults. And I, and I think that speaks, again, partially to your character and also about how much the program means to you guys and how much, and that, and how much that shows to the community. And I think that's a really, really powerful thing. So thank you, guys. You guys were great.
Do you have questions with them?
Yeah.
They were prepared to answer any questions you might have. Oh, they're just kind of picking me in a metaphorical way.
You got a lot of support from the school leadership. How did you support each other? What did you do to keep each other strong? Could you give us an example or two? Thank you, Zoe.
Yeah. So I think there's like, a lot of friendships that I've made along the way, like with other Playbook student leaders. And it's kind of a kinship, I guess. Like, we, we're all doing the same thing. We're all going through the same training. And, you know, it's really nice to have that, you know, like, connection with other students.
I'd say a similar thing. I definitely think, along the way, you kind of like, look up to the people you do it with, because you think you kind of like, think the same way. And it definitely makes me look at people and like, feel proud of them as well.
Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, what are you doing to pass on the, the energy and the incentive for the leaders that follow you? That's a very leading question, isn't it? Yeah, but we, what do you think, Zoe?
You guys help the seventh graders get ready for their leadership role next year? Yeah?
Part of, part of the answer is keep doing what you're doing, because you're teaching and you're leading by, by showing them how you think and feel and act, and how you care for others. That might be the most powerful thing that you do.
I think we really tried to have the video be almost an exit interview as well, in a sense of where we go from here. And to be honest, what's amazing, you know, sometimes when you honor teams, I believe you just honored the CCHS swim team, it's at the end of their season. This is not the end of this season. Two hundred and fifty-six Concord Middle School students have served as Playbook student leaders. That's almost a quarter of the student population up at CCHS High School. And that is probably the most powerful that we can give them to advance up to the high school and for them to look back at the current sixth and seventh grade Playbook student leaders who are going to carry that torch at Concord Middle School. We're at a point where one in six Concord Middle School students are Playbook student leaders. You know, we've been asked, how come it hasn't ended racism? How come there's still antisemitic things that are happening online? How come the Playbook hasn't stopped all of that? Well, for every time it happens, if you have one out of six that are leading the social justice work, the students that are surrounding the student who's making that bad, hateful, crippled choice are going to be told by those students, what are you doing? And that's the Playbook work. That's the legacy that these kids have really brought to Concord Middle School and soon to CCHS.
Thank you guys so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay. I'm going to move on to, um, yeah. And with that, I also, before we get into public comment, I have one more recognition that I'd like to speak about. This is Mr. Booth's last meeting with us after six years, two full terms as a school committee member. And so that we can properly send him off, I've actually asked Cynthia to share some words with us this evening.
So thank you very much. Didn't know when this was going to occur. So we are saying goodbye to Mr. Booth, as far as his role in the school committee. But I know we're not saying goodbye to him as a member of our communities. Just a brief reflection on his years of service to Concord, Carolina, and Boston. Court began his tenure in Concord in 1985. So I'm not doing the math really quickly, but it's 40 years. So he, was it called, CC, what was it called when you started?
It was Adult and Community Education.
So that didn't change?
No, it transformed itself in 1969 and became that.
Okay. So he led the transition to fully funded, fully self-funded status. He reorganized the department. Under his tenure, he established the Concord Summer School, the Instrumental Music School, CC Driver Education, and the Village University, just a few major initiatives. He was first in Massachusetts to earn a master's in community service administration. After earning his teaching degree, he is an educator. Was president of the Concord Chamber of Commerce. Currently, he teaches part-time at Northeastern, part-time at Hale Education, working with K-12 and college groups. He is on the Thoreau Farm Trust Board. He is on the 229 Main Street Advisory Task Force and the Concord 250 Committee. He teaches for the American Heart Association and volunteers for the American Red Cross. So those are just a few of the things that he has done and is doing, including his work on the Concord School Committee. He has been on the Concord School Committee for six years. Not a normal task these days. He has been on many bargaining teams. He has served as vice chair at the region, I think, chair at the Concord School Committee, and chair, no, vice, just vice chair at the region, vice chair of the Concord School Committee. And there's numerous other things. We look forward to 40 more years of service, Mr. Booth. And I know you will provide, you know, he's done so much, not just for the town of Concord, but for the town of Carlisle and our Boston students. I wish you very good luck in your retirement. And I would hope that you would say a few words to us and to the community.
Well, when I was working for the public schools, often the school committee would introduce me as, Mr. Booth, please be brief. So I know we have a fair agenda tonight, and I will be brief. But thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, Alexa. Thank all of you. When I arrived here in 1985, it was for a night interview. And I thought, this is not going well. I can't find the door. Because this is not an easy building in the dark of night. Well, it's improved a little bit since then. And when I ran for office, as many school committee members know, some of us get recruited for office, because when somebody steps down, they, they seek somebody to fill their shoes. And so after a few meetings with prior school committee members, I decided, yes, I would indeed run. And the, the frequent question was, why do you want to run? What do you want to do? And I had ideas. That wasn't too difficult. The, the difficult one, the stopper one, was when somebody came along and said, when did you decide to run? And I thought, gee, actually, 1985, when I started working here. And what I mean by that is, to be a community educator is to serve on the school committee. The roles are so very, very similar, and the skill sets are so very similar. And that's why it wasn't too, too frightening to consider serving the kids and the teachers of this district, because I'd already been a community educator. I hope I've been all, I hope I've been able to offer a little bit. I know I sometimes am your protocol guy, but there's lots of wisdom around the room to carry that flag. So I'm not worried in the least. I want to commend Andrew and say, yep, you're still here. Thank you. Thank you for being ready to jump into the seat. I will suggest to you, the, the learning curve is steep, but you've already been told that, and I'm sure you'll do masterfully. But to my colleagues, I want to thank you, to the teachers, to the students, to the leadership of the district. I want to wish you the very, very best. And I want to tell you, this coat fits like a charm. I'll wear it proudly. I'll have a little time for some athletic events around CC now. So thank you.
Enjoy your Tuesday nights.
I shall. I will acknowledge one of the people who really was my mentor, and that's Bob Grom. I think you recognize him. And my stalwart supporter, none of this would happen without Renee. Renee, thank you for being here. I'm glad you weren't here every Tuesday night. Thank you all.
Well, we put this in here because we have some public comment coming that might be revolving around you, Court. So I'm going to skip to the public comment section right now. But before I do that, Harry, I know you're still with us. I know we kind of skipped over you, but we're going to come back to you after public comment. So it looks like we have two pieces of public comment in the room and one online. So we'll just go, we'll do everything in the room first and then go online. So we have Jim Bozak first. Come on up.
Cynthia, said everything I wanted to say.
You got it?
Thanks. Madam Chair and members of the school committee, good evening. Jim Bozak, president of the Concord Public School Building Service Workers, 39-year employee of this district, 1985. You and I started the same year, and the friendship started then, and it continues. I moved here to this building in 88, and, and between 88 and 93. And the two of us usually were alone here in the building at night. Weekends, I'd come and check the building. You'd be here, working on that catalog. And the friendship just developed. I moved to the middle school, and I was fortunate to meet your, your wife Renee and your two wonderful kids, Dylan and Charlie. Wonderful family. Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to come here in person to thank you for all you've done for the students of Concord, Carlisle, and Boston, and the staff. Truly, you know, I'm blessed by the friendship that I've developed. Thirty-nine years, that's a long time. And you are everything a school committee member should be, your class act. So I wanted to come and say that. But I also wanted to thank you for one other thing. Back in the early 80s, probably, people don't know that in this room, didn't look like this back then, but Steve Martin was here, Goldie Hawn was here, and others, because they were doing a movie, and they'd come here every night, house at a, and they'd come here every night and do their dailies, and for months. So we were on a first-name basis with, with Goldie Hawn and Steve Martin. It was kind of eerie. It really was. So I want to thank you. You brought them here and rubbed elbows with Hollywood, so I really appreciate that. I wish you good health, much happiness. I hope you're still working on that big building on Omarboro Road on that committee, and I appreciate everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And next. Next, we're going to go to Bob Grom, who's with us?
What a night, Court. What a night. Hard to believe, but we're all here to recognize you and to thank you for your service and all the rest of it. Thank you, Chair Morano. Want to say hello to everyone in the room and on Zoom. You know, I came here to express my thoughts about you. And, you know, we had a lot of state champions here in the, in the room earlier. So I would designate you the Concord champion. Because, I mean, the background information we just heard from these two individuals is just short of extremely impressive. And so anyways, I, you know, when I think of you, two thoughts come to my mind, and they were both emphasized by the two previous speakers, which is very interesting. One is your volume of work that you've done over, you know, it's now 40 years, but I didn't know it was 40 years when I came here. I know it's been 10 to 12 years since I've known you. And it, it, it amazes me, because I, I compare myself in terms of how much work I've been able to accomplish to yours. And I'm like, it's a, it's a small percentage thereof, you know? So that, to me, is extremely impressive. The other thing is that of all the committees you've been in, your level of engagement is always top-notch, you know? And, and that's important, you know? If, if, if I'm a member in a committee and I don't do my homework, coming in, sitting down, and it's kind of a waste of time for me and for the committee. But again, you are never in that position. You always are prepared. You make extremely high-level comments that bring the conversation to a higher level. And, and that, not too many people can do. I, I personally, I don't think I was ever capable of that, but I recognize that you do that. And, and that's, you know, again, tremendous. The, the example I would like to use to, to support that thought is when I saw it on video, when you made that comment about the Allen Garrison naming of the middle school. And I'm not And I'm not talking about now whether that's right or wrong and all that. I'm just saying you made a, to the best of my recollection, like a four, five, six-minute comment. And for some reason, that turned out to be extremely memorable to me. And I have to say, that's probably one of the best comments I've heard of any school committee meeting I was at or I watched on video. So you just, you know, you got all the components right, you started out the right way, you had a middle section to the comments, and then the end was excellent, and, you know, it, I never was able to do that, so I appreciate that. Second thing I want to talk about is character. And you're an exceptional personality, you know? You have honesty, thoughtfulness, helpfulness. Your heart is in the right place, and you always treat people with respect, which is very important. Having said that, you also are an independent thinker, and that's very important. But you intertwine that with being congenial, being cooperative, and the end result is that you get comments like these three today, and I'm sure many more as you go forward. And so, that's all I wrote down. I just want to say that you have every reason to be very proud, and it's too bad the six years are over.
We won't debate that one.
No, no, that's all right.
But thank you very, very much. And I don't overstate it when I say, any success I've had is in large part due to the fact that when I first joined this committee, you were chair, you were experienced, and you were ready and willing to mentor me. You asked me if I wanted it. I said yes, and there it was. You gave me that support, so I want to thank you, Bob. You've been an inspiration to me, and you continue to be. Thank you.
I'm very pleased with those kind words. I think you're overstating it, but.
Thank you. All the way. So much. We're going to continue with public comment, and I will definitely say it's three minutes or less. I'll just reiterate that, because we have a little bit more time. It's okay. Is there any more public comment online? Okay, anybody else in the room? Oh, we got one more.
Yep. Andrew, I was going to introduce myself, but I appreciate the kind words. Court, best of luck. Thanks for your service. And I just wanted to quickly say thank you to everyone that supported the election this year, the campaign. It meant a lot to me. We had a lot of people help, we had a lot of voters turn out this election, which was awesome. And to me, the best way to show my appreciation is really just to show up here in two weeks for my first meeting and give it all, give it my all for the next three years. So really looking forward to serving with most of you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so public comment is now closed, because we've no one online. And Harry, I am so sorry that I have made you wait this entire time. It looks like Felicity and Zaria are not with us, so I really appreciate, and you're still at the high school, so I'm sorry.
I am, yes. We had a Senate meeting today, so I ended up sticking around afterwards. Yeah, unfortunately, Felicity and Zaria couldn't be here. They just both had other places they needed to be, but I can definitely go through this off you guys. So first of all, the CCHS Performing Arts Department earned gold medals at MICA once again, so that's always very exciting to see. And then we also have a number of field trips going on right now, so over the past couple of weeks, we had the eclipse viewing in Vermont, which I'm sure you guys have all heard quite a lot about over the past few days. We also had the Denmark Exchange, so the students from Denmark who came here, I think it was in November, we carried out the rest of the exchange, and a bunch of Concord Carlisle students were there over April vacation, so that was very cool to see. We also have the trip to Taiwan, it's primarily people enrolled in Chinese here at the school, and they just got back a couple of days ago. I think they're pretty jet-lagged, but they all had good things to say. And of course, the band trip to Japan. And then also in the coming weeks, we're going to have the Nubian Square trip for ninth graders, so I got the chance to go on that trip, actually, as a student advisory leader last year. That is a really cool experience, and I'm looking forward to hearing about it this year. And then also, Senate is just working on a couple of things. We have the pop-up thrift store towards the end of the year, which we always do, and then just some different things for the seniors. So our destination map, where people can post where they're headed next year, and then our rejection cranes, where people will take college rejection letters and fold them up and hang them. And then ticket sales for the prom, the high school prom, have begun, as well as ticket sales for the musical, the prom. We were a little confused writing, but both tickets. And then students have begun preparing for all of the AP exams, which start in early May and end, I think, on the 18th. And then exchange students are coming from Ecuador soon, so it's a very busy time at the high school.
It is.
Very busy. And Harry, your last meeting is also coming up soon, right?
Yeah, I think it'll be soon-ish, but I can definitely come after graduation, because I think.
Look at that. I love that.
Dedication.
All right, well, we'll be in touch about, you know, when your last meeting is, but we appreciate the update as always. I know Dr. Hunter is always grateful when all the trips have arrived back, so.
Always. They're still in Japan, so we're waiting on their arrival back, I think tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. All right.
All successful.
Well, thank you for that, and best of luck to Felicity. Is Felicity in the prom, the show?
She's doing publicity for it, I believe.
Publicity, okay. All right, so that's coming up in, I think it's.
Yeah, it's the second weekend in May.
Great. Well, thank you as usual for your update, and we will see you next time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. All right, I feel like we've had a full meeting. It's been wonderful already. I mean, we could just stop right here. Now we're on to our consent agenda. So does anyone have anything, I'm sorry, there's like feedback coming from the microphone. It's really annoying.
Turn that one off.
I think it's coming from the TV. It might be the TV, so.
The TV?
Maybe it's that one. No, it's the TV. I think it's the TV.
A lot of feedback. I don't know if you can help with the mics and the sound.
Sorry. So we will look at the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as outlined here. We have both CCRSD and CPS items. Do you want to do them separately or together?
I think we do it together.
Do them together, fine. So move to approve warrants one and two and three and four with the respective dates following each.
And then items B, C, D, E, F.
Yep.
Yeah, I wondered about that, whether that was. Okay, so let me read those out then. Also, item B, minutes of January 23rd, C, February 27 minutes, D, March 15 minutes, E, policy minutes of March 26th, F, surplus Willard Chairs, G, thorough weeded books. I assume that means liquidation.
Yes.
And H, CCHS staff enrollment request for two children to attend CPS.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then on to correspondence. And I will start with you, Mrs. Anderson.
At Concord Public School, there might be, actually, they might be mixed. We had an email about phone-free policies in schools, three emails about Article 22 for town meeting, an email seeking clarity about anti-semit, policies on anti-Semitism, and a DJ offering his services to the schools.
All right, and at the region, we had someone contact us about pursuing T-Mobile on the regional campus, and you all got my response to that, that at this point, we're not pursuing the cell tower on the regional campus. And then we'll move on to discussion. So policy, so we have a second reading of policy, and we did our first read at the last meeting. I've gotten some feedback on one of our policies, as has Dr. Hunter, and Alexa's also gotten feedback, so I would suggest, and it's the fundraising policy, so I would suggest that, you know, this has actually gone through what we typically do with policy. We had some public comment on it. Let's pull it out and discuss in our next policy meeting what the comment was and see where we're at. So that was, I have to.
JJE is the policy that I think maybe we just pull and move back into policy workshop discussion. So they were all verbal comments. There was nothing we got via email. So there were just some concerns about the way that the policy is worded and ways it might have unintended consequences with restricting practices that are currently in place specifically at the high school. So we, given that we just heard those concerns from some parents who were involved with that fundraising, we figured better to discuss it, but because we have so many policies to approve the rest.
Okay. Are we, so how are you going to transmit the verbal comments into some written?
I think we'll discuss it, like, I think we'll discuss them.
The next time we convene as a policy committee, we'll discuss all comments that we've gotten so far.
Okay.
And they were really specific to, like, athletic boosters, so.
And I'm just wondering, maybe our practices aren't so good.
Right, right, but so I think we need to have more discussion about what we're doing and what the policy is going to be.
The two specific ones, some feedback came through Aaron Johnkis to me, were on door-to-door sales and contests for, you know, to get kids competitively fundraising, which MAC encourages against very clearly in the policy we were looking at. So that's the discussion I think we're having.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
So we'll just move that to our next policy reading. So when we go to vote on that, we'll vote on all the policies from our last meeting. We'll list those out with the exception of, remind me, JGE. Hard to say.
I was pretty excited people were paying enough attention to know.
I was too. I was like, actually, this is great. This is how it's supposed to work. Because, again, that is why you have a first read and a second read, so that people can comment on it. It actually was great.
It's rare that we get that, so, yeah.
Yeah. All right. On to the amenities building next step. So you should be in receipt of the information from Bob about, and I'm going to turn it over to Bob to explain kind of how this is going to work.
Okay. Want me to just walk through it, or should I display it?
You can just walk through it real quick. Yep, we all have the information, so, just on a very high level.
So I've shared a memo with the school committee meeting. First, just summarizing the CCHS access road project to kind of highlight where the funds are coming from. We came in under budget on the project by approximately $352,000. Some of that was for things such as less landfill disposal costs than we needed as part of the access road. There was some landfill area that we needed to remove that was under the new access road. And the disposal costs vary depending on the type of fill, and we had pretty much the most favorable fill that was there in each case. So that was an example of the type of thing we save money on. Plus, their quotes are, for paving projects, they include pricing, but it's based on volume, so the amount of pavement we needed was a little bit less than was projected. In addition, we went for sloped instead of square, curbs. So those three things were the main contributor. In addition, there was some lighting that was deferred because of uncertainty on the project. The funding sources for this work were $421,000 in operating budget funds, $853,000, $665 in capital article funds, and $200,000 in capital stabilization funds. So it's important to note that, because when we return unspent funds, we can only return them to the source they came from. So I just want to walk through what we, what I'm proposing we do. What I'm proposing we first do is that we return the unused funds for this project, $200,000 of it, to the capital stabilization fund. We had funded, that was $200,000 for the project was funded from the capital stabilization. We have $352,000 under budget, so I'm recommending that we make a motion to return those funds to capital stabilization to make them available for whatever other capital projects we decide to make them available for. Second motion, and they have to be done in this order, is to recommend that we then designate out of the capital stabilization fund $175,000 to cover the cost of a feasibility study and design cost for an amenities building adjacent to the CCHS lower athletic field. And this is to kind of eliminate the need for funding from both towns for this, instead to do this design and answer some of the questions that were raised. That would leave $25,000 in capital stabilization that we could use for other purposes later. I also just wanted to highlight that, you know, $200,000, not the total balance, the money that, the additional, the difference between the $352,000 and $200,000 would get applied towards, we basically wouldn't spend all of the money we had designated at the end of FY '23, the $421,000. And when we close out fiscal year '24 that we're in, at the end of the year, that would end up flowing to E and D. That process kind of has to wait through year-end. We don't have to do anything. That'll just happen automatically. But we can't, we can't re-access that money. That's only available to be returned to E and D through the year-end closeout process. And then, you know, one of the things too, is in terms of the sequencing of funds, when we borrow money, we have to first apply the expenses, so the capital of 853 has to be used first. It made sense to use the operating funds first, since we had already designated them, and then to preserve the capital stabilization. So that's the reasoning for how this is being presented.
Great. Hey, any questions for Bob?
Yeah, maybe you're simply going to repeat what you said, but help me clarify, if you would, this one, Bob. We fully expended the borrowing authorization before we fully expended the actual monies available. Hence, we picked up borrowing costs also. Would we have been wiser to tap the encumbrance in its entirety first and borrow less, and hence save those borrowing costs, just as a future practice?
We didn't know we were going to come in this much under budget, so we would have been.
But nonetheless, in the order of which we spend, could that have been different?
If I had had a sense that we were going to come in under budget, I would have requested to borrow less. We, we just would need to know in advance to be able to do that. I get what you're saying, just you would need to have the, once we've gone out to borrow, I didn't want to have the district in a position where we were cash flow-wise, not having money to fund the project, and then borrowing three months after the fact. So I had to move forward with the borrowing.
Makes perfect sense. Were the borrowing authorization much greater, that borrowing might have happened in stages?
Yeah, and this is a ban.
This smaller amount, not so much.
Right, and this is also a ban, which means, you know, we could elect to pay down some of the principal, you know, there's, we have discretion over how quick we pay down the principal. It's not necessarily a long-term bond, so every year, we have to renew this, it's called a bond anticipation note, and, you know, we'll decide through our budget process how much of the principal to pay down, and so we can potentially avoid some.
We could pay down the principal from E and D.
Yeah, you could. We do have, we have, we have a land, we have the landfill as well, which has a little bit of a banned balance left. So that's almost paid off. I think we might have one payment left, and we've budgeted a chunk of that every year to be paid down, so when that comes off, we could use our budget of principal, it's about $200,000 and change on that. We could redirect it to this and pay this down. So those are things that we'll look at through the budget process.
Great, thank you.
Great.
What were you planning on for the lighting? Because I drove around and I noticed that all of the lights are currently mounted on utility poles.
So, I mean, I think that the work in the project is aesthetics-based. I think we replace the fixtures themselves. I would say that's something that could be decided to be done later. The vendor's not going to hold the price for us now. We would have to.
No, no, I'm just like, we have no safety issues. This is just mostly just fixtures.
Yeah, we would replace the poles.
But they're mounted on the utility poles right now.
Yeah, I think part of the discussion was to look at getting like a steel, something different or something nicer looking than what it is.
Exactly, exactly.
I think we all have come to that conclusion. It's functional, it's lit.
I thought it was more of a safety issue. I think the lighting that did go in along the sidewalk has been enough of an improvement that it feels much, much safer and more well-lit where it needed. that it feels much, much safer and more well-lit where it needs to be. I think that's my take on it, having sort of perused it now that we've gotten to this discussion. So I think we've made enough progress that we don't really need to spend the rest.
I thought we had old poles or something, and I drove around, like, oh no, we're not without using poles.
Yeah, no, we're-
We can save this money, because again, it's an aesthetic concern, we don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, that, that lighting on the side is, is amazing. I mean, it's hugely improved, made a big difference.
Massively.
The only, you know, the challenge, I think, is in between those tennis courts, that's still not, but that's not part of this project.
That was never part of this project.
Never part of this project, so...
And there's smaller things you could do, too, you don't need to spend as much.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're putting approximately like $150,000 after the $200,000, is that right?
The $150,000 will flow to E and D.
Right, yeah, okay.
Which helps, and, you know, we were paying $395,000 to cover something else, it's a one-time cost for the Minuteman exit, so it does help offset that a bit.
So this will go into F Y 23?
It'll be the E and D that gets certified at the end of F Y '24.
Okay, got it.
All right, any other questions on next steps? So we have two motions in there that we'll be making during our action items.
Okay.
Okay? And it is that time for our budget update and quarterly transfers, and we're gonna do CPS. I apologize to Sharon, we'll have to listen to CPS a little bit, so we're gonna do CPS and we're gonna do the region. So I'm gonna give it back to you, Bob, to dis-
Before, can I just-
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of cue us up. I think what's been important in the work we've been doing the last few weeks, Bob's been very great at communication, and some of where he's considered us to be really eking our way to the finish line here for F Y '24. So he'll go through the numbers, what that led to before the break was, we're not using the word freeze, but just shy of that, I think we call it a frost this morning with the administrators. We've suspended our normal practices in terms of how we're, we're operating. There's always an approval process, normally it's electronic, and we get it as it comes up through the, you know, through the service, the, you know, approval system. What we've said to everyone, from administrators right onto the teachers, I directly communicated with staff, that we're suspending that, and first, there has to be a verbal or written approval. So they're now having to go to the administrators, who then come to us, and the only things we're funding are things we absolutely need between now and June 30th. Anything that can get delayed until July is getting put on hold. So that's not something we've done in a long, long time. In my early years, we were putting in for supplemento warrant articles, because we were afraid we were gonna run out of money. We haven't operated that way in a really long time. We're not to that point right now, but we're needing to be very careful. Otherwise, you're gonna draw more from reserves like Circuit Breaker to finish the year, and that's not a position we want to be in. So we're trying to minimize the need to do that. So just to sort of frame the context, we are being very open and communicative about the state of the F Y '24 budget, so Bob can talk you through the numbers.
And can I ask, when do you think the last time you did this in your tenure here? I mean, it has been since I've been on the school committee.
I've done a little quieter version, where I just talk to the administrators and sort of, nothing so blatant and like directly to everybody, and say, whoa, we're getting worried we're gonna run out of money, or, you know.
So we're tight, we're tight.
We are running very tight, for, when you hear the balances for where we are on April 23rd, I mean, we have two full months to go. And the amounts that are unencumbered or unaccounted for are very small right now, compared to what we're normally using.
Okay.
So, in CPS, as of the, as of this, you know, the reports run just in the last couple days, if you look at it in aggregate, we have, what shows is a $55,000 balance. We encumber pretty much everything that we know about, that we will incur, like payroll costs, we encumber through the end of the year. So, you know, our balance reflects encumbrances, we've already factored those in. Our out-of programs with out-of districts do not yet reflect special ed funds that we will be applying to those. We will apply them as we spend the money, so the encumbrances there, you know, in effect are slightly overstated. On the flip side, we have the fixed assets category of $174,000. Those are for school buses that we have yet to, to purchase or lease, and so that will be fully spent down. We also have existing leases that have not yet made their, we haven't yet made all of our fiscal year payments for this year yet. And then in maintenance, it's a little bit of a quirk, but we get billed by the town, the town has a contract, and it's approximately $75,000, the school share of that. So that $132,000 you see for maintenance, $75,000 of that is a charge from the town for our share of waste disposal costs in all of our schools. And again, it's a municipal-wide contract. So when you factor those, all of those adjustments in, you know, I'd estimate that we have approximately $100,000 accessible for us now through the end of this fiscal year, which is very tight, and, you know, we'd hope not to deplete the Circuit Breaker reserves further. I would add that we have partnered with the town to obtain funding belatedly, it's next year, but the homeless transportation reimbursement of $76,000, I believe it is, that will be added to our operating budget next year. You know, we didn't budget for that, what they're basically doing is paying us back next year for what we're, what we've already spent. So, you know, if we overspent our budget by $76,000, we, in essence, we would use Circuit Breaker to balance it, you know, put more money into Circuit Breaker, and we'd be able to replenish Circuit Breaker the following year.
Right.
So...
Is that likely what we'll do? Because this is ongoing.
Yes. Yeah, there's ways we can, we can look at changing it. I have a thought for the region, I don't want to go too far into it now, but we're probably stuck with that for CPS for now. So while I'm talking about CPS, I'll just leave it at that, that's probably what we're doing for CPS. So, yeah, but we're paying attention, we're managing things tightly, and basically Lori or I is getting either an email or text for every expenditure that we have right now. And we'll see if we can exhale, maybe, if we're able to hold that off and not spend much, you know, maybe we'll have a little more comfort.
Yeah.
But for now, that's what we need to do.
Just for your daily email flow, do they flow to you through principals or directly from?
No, no, through the principals. So I imagine there's vetting that never gets to us, if that's a part of what you're asking.
That'd be a lot of minutia.
Okay, all right. Onto the region.
Good luck.
I know.
So just to-
Good luck all of us.
Thank you, exactly. Pay attention to it, you know.
To, to address the question Carrie raised for the region, I would say it's actually probably simpler for the region. We can budget homeless transportation revenue, and we can budget the expense, and they'll net, and it'll be no change to assessments, but then we won't be responsible for offsetting it in our budget, but that's something we'll bring up during budget discussions. So there's an easier way to handle that for the region that we don't have available to us at CPS.
Why is that, because the money goes to the town?
Yes, yep. We could ask them to budget it and let us budget the expense, but I don't want to confuse the guidelines process right now, so...
I do rather.
So for the region, and again, this is, I was thinking I would manually update this, it was a suggestion from Dr. Hunter, is that we have, you know, we do have commitments for the long-term debt, that's not encumbered. It's not encumbered because it's really a wire transfer that is done automatically, but we're gonna spend every penny of that $1.428,980. Those are commitments the district has to make debt, debt payments. Similarly, the, so that's, you know, you look at the balance, you can consider that encumbered. The $1 million in fixed charges is for benefits, and those flow through our payroll system. As we make the deductions, we also record the expenses, and because of some mechanical issues, we don't have that encumbered. Mechanical issues with our technology and our processes, something we're gonna look at, but between the two of those, that's $2.4 million. So, you know, we have a $2.2 million balance, $2.4 million we know we're gonna spend, and we also know we have offsets to the programs of other districts of about $400,000 from the I D A grant funds, which we will apply to our expenditures for the rest of the year. So those encumbrances for programs from their districts, we actually will shift some of that, and that'll be reduced by $400,000. So the net of all of that is, you know, that's $2.4 million minus $400, it's, you know, you subtract $2 million from $2.211, we have about a little bit over $200,000 left available in the region for the rest of the school year. And that includes, you know, substitutes, that includes maintenance costs, that includes, you know, potential, anything that could come up in the region that we anticipated yet. We also have not, I should say, it's not really 200, the fixed asset cost for vehicle costs, we have not yet recorded all of our vehicle costs for the year, so if we were to continue our process, program of two additional buses a year, we'd use all of that $128,000, so, you know, it's actually closer to $125,000 available. One thing we've, we have done already is, we have a budgeted O P E B contribution of $550,000. You know, we have received guidance from our O P E B consultant that we can contribute $425,000 a year to fund our O P E B over five years. And, so we've adjusted our budget for that, I've accessed half of that to kind of help balance the budget for this year, and we potentially might need to access the other half of 62, not a half of it, when I say half of that, I mean half of the difference.
Half of the difference.
Between $550 and $425, so it's $125,000, I've taken half of that difference, which is $62,500, to help, kind of help us get through this year, and also, it's also without compromising the long-term stability of O P E B. We're still making very healthy contributions, so I just wanted to-
I feel like we had that conversation.
The only difference is that was F Y '25.
Right, right.
We decided we can borrow from it now for '24.
I think that's wise.
So both districts are in a similar place, this is not necessarily completely new, the CPS has been a little bit tight, but the region is a little bit new to, I think, the high school, I think, I mean, at least in my time here.
They've both ebbed and flowed, depending on a lot of things going on.
So, and we're managing similarly in both districts, where we're keeping a tight eye, and, you know, it's not that, you know, we're not avoiding doing things that we should be doing and that are important, but, you know, there are discretionary things that can be deferred, we're deferring them.
Yep. It's wise.
Have you probably told me before, but what's the majority of the 367 drop in instructional leadership?
A piece of that is some of the savings on teacher replacement hires, a piece of that is instructional materials, a piece of that is substitute teachers have been hard for us to get at the high school, so we do have a budget for it, but we typically have been not finding people to fill those.
That's gotta be a couple of, couple, more than one or two teachers, I mean, that's...
It's, it's multiple teachers.
Yeah, okay.
And I, yeah, I'd have to go through, I think, there's also, we've had some vacancies in some of the tutor positions, I believe. We didn't fill one special ed teacher position.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a mid-year, August decision, when some moving pieces happened, we scrunched the numbers and realized we could go without, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
It was significant difference.
Yes.
Yeah, that's probably half of that number even, or not quite half.
Okay.
Appreciate this, this is an important update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will be voting on some transfers in the action items, so I'll save that for then. And now we are on to what we've all been waiting for, is the regional budget for F Y '25. I think that most of, not most of us, but there were one, two, four, four of us were at the select board meeting last night.
The last night?
It was last night, it feels like a long time ago, and just a, you know, a slight update, there was some discussion on regarding Article 20, which is the regional budget. There was discussion about, they still have not, they have not voted their position yet, and I believe they're gonna vote it at town meeting. They really wanted the finance committee to work with the school committee, to, you know, see if we could go to town meeting with the same number, I heard that last, and anyone that was there, feel free to, you know, jump in. And Prashar was also there, and we had a little back-and-forth, he's like, we're not revoting it, so Vincom is not going to revote a number before town meeting, their intention is to amend our article on the floor of town meeting.
And I think, you know, it's interesting, I think different chairs have different styles. I had early conversations with Prashar, I don't know that he had these with the, same conversations with the select board, but, you know, his philosophy is just a little different. He was like, you know, we put forth a guideline, because that's what we believe is, is the right path forward for Concord. There is no negotiating, so, you know, past practice that has been typical in Concord has been, you know, more of, you know, a sort of dialogue, I guess, a back and forth. So I think that had confused some select board members, who were hoping to sort of see that past practice. So, and again, I, I, I respect and understand Prashar's position, it's just sort of a deviation from what has happened, you know, before. We used to see more movement, you'd see the, you know, the, the school budgets come down, the guidelines come up, that kind of thing, so, you know, again, this is just a different approach, and I, neither is better or worse than the other, but it is important to make the distinction.
So, attached to-
Can you turn this T V off?
I know, I kind of want to-
It's really annoying.
Yeah. I mean, I'm like hearing the feedback.
It is, that one?
Super frustrating.
Well, we can just turn it off.
I think we just shut them both off.
Because it's not serving anyone but us.
No, nobody's in the room, Tom doesn't mind if he doesn't see it, okay, maybe? All right, oh, that's much, well, now it's, it's a microphone.
I guess she, I guess, yeah, she found the bottom noise.
Yeah.
But I don't know why it's...
I, I'm experiencing none of it, I'm having it very difficult.
Yeah, it's tricky. So you have attached to the agenda the memo that Lori sent from April 4th regarding the budget update, so this is just a time that we can have some discussion about the regional budget as we approach town meeting, we've already voted on the budget, our motions are set, but, you know, I'll just open it up to the committee for some discussion.
I have a question. I am curious if you can just walk through your, how you came to the recommendations of what would be cut, the reduction, should it not pass, should our budget not pass?
I mean, the, the answer is, we have a retirement in that computer science position, so I'm not, we would not actually be, you know, reducing force, we'd be, you know, absorbing the cut through attrition. So that was really the driving decision, and it's an isolated, I think that's not even the right word, it's a small program that impacted the fewest number of kids. That doesn't mean I think it's a good thing, because that's a pretty important program to us. We've been growing not only the computer science instruction, but the engineering certificate that it's attached to. We have come into this place in the budget where we've reduced multiple positions already, both teachers and tutors, to the tune of seven F T Es. We're into Circuit Breaker, we're into E and D to balance things, so we're using reserves already. We've trimmed O P E B, we've trimmed other places to compensate for the salary increases, which are always the driving force behind any budget. The guideline doesn't even cover those usually, so we come into a budget build looking for savings to bring you a number that isn't seven and eight percent.
I couldn't- Seeing in our neighbors.
Which you are seeing in your neighbors, yes. And I, I frankly just couldn't find the spots that were available elsewhere. You know, we were in the early discussion of what we were starting to see F Y '24 to turn into, so knowing we were deferring things already that are gonna end up being 25 costs, materials, facility, you know, things for the building that we're not doing, that we're holding off on, Bob and Russ are vetting that list thoroughly, I didn't see anyplace else to go, unfortunately, besides program and student impacting. So then it became a thought process, with others, of course, of where was a lever we could look at, you know, minimizing impact to how many, you know, fewest number of kids, which I hate saying, because we're talking about cutting an entire program. which I hate saying because we're talking about cutting an entire program. There's no good solution there. So, we were to the point of programs and students. So, we can all debate whether that's the right direction to go or not.
You know, I think when, in February, Tracy and I sat at the select board table with a mixture of select board members, finance committee members from both Concord and Carlisle. And, you know, and I, and Christine Reynolds and I were, you know, sort of exchanging ideas. And I think what, what we really do have to face with respect to the fiscal challenges that we're facing is, we are talking about FTE reductions, you know. You know, I'm, I've become like a little bit, not the word resentful, but, you know, we talk about fiscal sustainability, and I really feel like that's kind of a mask for, it's a, it's a softer, cushier way of saying staff reductions. And so, to me, this is, I think, a good way to highlight the reality of what we're talking about and using real language to, to, to talk about it. So, if we are going to be able to deliver budgets that are, you know, again, the lowest in our peer group, some of the lowest in the state, this is about FTE reductions, which you made those harsh cuts to start with, and then with the original seven FTE reductions. So, this is just a further extension of that. And so, I understand how you arrived there. That makes sense to me because that is what we're talking about. And I think the conversation should be and can be honest.
Yeah, we could debate which programs to touch.
That's, that's different.
Just a recommendation. You know, I think even, you just heard, we eliminated a sped position when it became something we had vacant suddenly last summer, and we crunched the numbers, and we're like, wait, we can, and I'll give Brian Miller and Katie Stahl credit, they saw that they could crunch numbers and not fill it. So, that's, that's a reduction in staff before we even started the FY '25 because that number didn't carry forward. So, I know enrollment's down. I know folks are really watching that. We are too. It's not the same as what happens in an elementary school when enrollment goes down, where it's a cleaner line between 100 kids and a certain number of classrooms. They're sprinkled through all different sections, and it's not got the same one-to-one correlation. So, we have to look at it at a much different lens and a different perspective and come at it from, how many sections of things are we offering? What's our target class size? Working within the teachers', you know, for course load? And where does that, you know, benchmark and threshold start to hit? What programs are we gonna offer or not offer? You know, Brian, Brian and Katie just spent a lot of time looking at course signups and what's gonna run and what's not gonna run. I don't know if you've had the pleasure of being on the other end of parents finding out we're not running something that their child wanted, but that, we've had to make our way through that. So, I, we're at program and students. That's where we are in this FY '25 build. And I guess the other comment I'll just make, given where FY '24 is, because we've done this other years, recent years, to get to guideline just by finding the money, quote unquote, when it's not real, is somewhat what's happening here right now. And if you do that another layer deep, you're going to create a fiscal problem and some real challenges for the district that we're gonna quickly be into reserves. And then, you're gonna need an even bigger COLA, or, you know, percentage increase. So, that's where we are.
Or capital projects that get ignored.
Yes, with a three point, with a 3% operational increase.
Right.
Which I still wished had been celebrated and.
Yeah, sure.
Hasn't really been celebrated yet.
Well, I mean, I, I actually think as a school committee, I mean, I do think that we are, we're being responsible. I think we should celebrate a 3% budget. I mean, looking at what's around, looking at, you know, we talk a lot about our chairs group. We talk about the overrides happening and act in Bucksboro, in Westford, in, you know, it was Sudbury last year, it's Belmont, it's next year, Grotten Dunstable. And next year, it's gonna be Boxborough. Like, so, we're not in that situation. And I'm grateful we're not in that situation, but I do think it's been careful budgeting. And the fact that we're so tight at this point in April, there's no money to find. You know, the quote, "Find the money," and you should be able to just shave a little here and shave a little there. That does not exist. It is FTEs and it's teachers. And I think that, you know, as a school committee, it's our job to advocate for those programs. And I, you know, and I said it last night to select.
Provided it's responsible.
Provided it's responsible, which I think we've proven it's responsible. And I do look forward to advocating for those programs because I do think they're important. You know, I, I was gonna say this when Matt Goldberg was here, but the U.S. News and World Report rankings came out today. We are 20th in the state. There are eight charter schools ahead of us, some of them exam schools. We are literally first in the state in STEM. Now, is that because we have the engineering certificate and we have all these great science programs? Probably is. We are 13th in the country. Like, we should be celebrating that. We should be celebrating our science programs. I'm not willing to, to cut those programs, and that's where it's at. And I think that we have to really ask ourselves, are we gonna advocate hard for this budget? And as one member of the school committee, yes, I will advocate hard for this budget because I do think it is responsible.
I guess my only last comment, I wanted to get to guideline. I hope that continues to be a message that's heard. We get to guideline when we're able to. We got to guideline at CPS. We've done it at the region time and time again. We've gone and come in under guideline and not even taken money that was offered to us. So, I, I guess I just wanna be sure I've said that, that if there was a way to do it and not touch.
Seeing a big picture.
Yes, we would have brought that to you, and we continue to try to review it.
We were under guideline as recently as last year.
At the region.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, and significantly, so.
It's like, I, I feel like you're actually under guideline with this budget because it was, it's really an enrollment shift that is completely out of our control that shifts the numbers up, but.
The overall budget is 3.08, which is under guideline.
Yeah. But I do wanna just say thank you. I've seen you and Bob put an incredible amount of work into this, both from a student perspective and making sure our, none of the cuts that we have to make do impact students, and then also from a town perspective of making sure that we're responsible with taxpayer dollars. And I, I do get the, I know that you care about meeting guideline, and I appreciate all that you've done, and I'm proud to support this budget going into town meeting.
Thanks.
I'd like us to do a little more work tonight. I don't know if my colleagues have the time or stomach for it, but I would respectfully beg to differ about the fact that we can't negotiate. I think we are negotiating if we bring in a, a budget that the select board and the perhaps FinCom won't support. We are asking for more negotiation. We're throwing it to the town. If we can throw less of a delta to the town, I think we should show best effort, see if we can do it. We've been asked to examine something like 0.4 of 1% of our budget, something less than half a percent. I think it's worth doing more than simply up or down on the superintendent's recommendations. I think we could perhaps do, do some work as well in the few minutes we have remaining before we get to town meeting. I am very opposed to putting student-centered cuts first on, on list, on any list, if there's any possibility of doing things that don't provoke the passions of interest groups and harm students. The music was an ad that now is not an ad. Now, we have the computer science as a retirement that won't be replaced, but perhaps we could save it. I would hope that we are mindful that nobody's questioning the 7.9% annual tax increases that are promised year to year in the future, even if we do our best to hold the guideline. Nobody's hesitating to accept the notion that an override is getting more and more threatening to us. If we can push that off, I think we should. We don't have a budget subcommittee, so we don't dig very deep into, into budget ourselves as a committee. I would like to share with you something that I hope the administration could speak to.
We did have a budget committee in the fall. We, we did work with Kerry Redd, yeah, and through the winter.
I was saying, we didn't, we don't have a budget subcommittee that spent considerable time on the budget as we once did. At any rate, I've come up with some items that do represent significant increases over last year. If you look at the notes column, it indicates the proposal, the December 5th proposal, and how it looks different than that of the prior year. And look to perhaps where we could consider tighter management on some of the non-student-facing and non-academic areas. You've heard me on many occasions say that when we bring in consultants and contractors, my hope is that we offload some of these skill sets so that they are then part of the skill set of our own people, and we don't have dependencies on external consultants. I see DEI going the other way, notwithstanding the considerable investment we've made in, in a director, in quickly replacing the turnover for personnel related to this program. So, I'm hoping that we could perhaps change our, our external look for consultants and see what we might be able to do inside. You'll see, if you look at DEI as an example, the fiscal '24 numbers in front of you, the fiscal '25 December recommendation is front of you. A proposal of a reduction I'd like you to think about and discuss tonight that would bring in a new number. And then, you see the new increase noted with the, the new percentage of increase. School district travel, this is one of many. Because of the magnitude of the increase, I'm hoping we can hold the line a little bit more conservatively. This would not impact student academics in the least. It might reduce the number of, of lengthy field trips. Coaching, I'd like to talk about this more. If we expand athletics, I hope is that we could also expand the use of athletic fees. Co-curricular, we are one of the exceedingly few districts that have no contribution, either required or voluntary, toward our abundant co-curricular programs.
Can I, can I just interrupt you for a second? So, as, we're all just seeing this for the first time tonight, I guess I would ask the committee, is this something that we, an exercise that we wanna go through? I mean, Lori and Bob have gone through the budget numerous times, and as school committee members, should we be picking apart, I mean.
We can answer every question.
They can answer the questions.
It's frustrated that we're being asked tonight. Yeah, I think the time for this was months ago.
I would answer, I think that picking apart a budget, although I don't like the phrasing, but I think understanding a budget and being responsible for a budget.
Sure, no, no, and I just, I agree with you.
Is actually our responsibility. I think we have to demonstrate we understand the budget, and I think we have to demonstrate we've tried, and I think we've been asked again last night in no uncertain terms to try.
Court, let people talk.
I am certainly letting people talk.
You've interrupted everyone who's trying to speak.
Go right ahead.
No, I'm, I was trying to.
No, so, I, I don't disagree with you, and, and I, I understand your, your reaction to the concept of picking apart. I think that, you know, this is an interesting exercise, and to Lori's point, she can likely answer, you know, why, why your proposed cuts, if you will, or reallocations don't make sense for the budget, my, for, 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 you know, whatever her rationale is. My reaction to this is the timing is inappropriate. We did have three budget workshops. We've had this budget since December. We've discussed it in numerous meetings. We've, and again, those budget workshops are meant for exactly this type of exercise that we, that this wasn't brought during those times, I think is unfortunate, if, if this is the level of detail that you really have put effort and time into looking at. So, my objection is not to the work itself. I think this is all valid and interesting. My objection is that we are on our last agenda item of our meeting before town meeting, and I don't, I don't believe that this is the appropriate time to go through this exercise. And again, I think also to Tracy's point, I think we should take a vote on whether or not this is an exercise that we're interested in looking at, only because I think, you know, again, we're looking at very, very trim budgets and, you know, again, so I just wanted, I do think we should take a pulse of, is this something that we wanna dedicate some time to this evening?
Alexa, Tracy, why is it on the agenda? Why is it on the agenda?
Because we've already voted our budget. It's on the agenda because Lori sent a memo on April 4th that we have not even had a chance to discuss. And so, our meeting was canceled on April 9th because the town had asked us to cancel our meeting for the election. So, it wasn't on the agenda. There's no vote on the agenda about what we're gonna reduce in our budget. That was not our intention, just as, you know, Prashar's intention for his FinCom meeting is not to discuss a different number either. Our intention was never to revote our budget, you know, five days before town meeting, that we've already approved.
Tracy, you're not speaking for me when you make that declaration.
But you voted on our budget, when we voted the budget.
Yes, yeah, and the budget is before us again tonight, true or false? And we have an issue with the FinCom likely, and with the select board certainly, true or false?
But Prashar is.
Isn't that why it's on the agenda?
No, Prashar is in the same exact situation as chair, and you are respecting his opinion as chair when he says, "We're not gonna budge." So, why are you not respecting the opinion of your chair here that's saying, "We're, we're just discussing the budget that's coming up for town meeting, and we've already taken a vote on it." Are you suggesting a revote tonight?
Well, I'll answer the question because I don't think that stalemate negotiations are really in our best interests, where we say, "You're fixed, we're fixed."
We've moved twice. We've moved more than anyone else, over and over again.
I don't think that demonstrates a school committee acting in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, but I also think too, to Lori's point, we've already reduced this budget by 120 something. So, so to suggest, so we are the party in this negotiation that has already put forth some good faith efforts from the original recommended budget. We, you know, so, and again, I'm not criticizing Mr. Patel. He has said, "This is the way I wanna run my committee," and, and it's, it's philosophical in nature, and I, and I respect that. You know, so, what I was thinking tonight that we would do would be, you know, we can discuss more from a philosophical standpoint. So, and I think it, and I think you've made your point clear, Court, and I think it's a valid one, and you're entitled to it, which is, you know, I don't support this budget. Or, you know, I think there's more work to have been done. I just wish, again, that, that the timing was different. There hasn't, you know, the, the facts on the ground today that you saw last night are no different than they were two months ago. This, the budget has been on our agenda numerous times. So, to me, I would like to, I don't know, how do we do that? Do you make a motion? You know, is this an exercise that we're looking for?
Well, I think maybe the whole committee can weigh in on where we're at.
So, I get your sense of the time. Wish we had more time. We don't. That's, that's a fact. Select board member Mary Hartman did ask about revenues, and I was wondering where we are right now with the cherry sheets. Are we?
So, I actually clarified with her today. She was looking for what the school, I know what the cherry sheets, but I clarified her question last night. I've sent the budget book to the entire select board. I referenced the pages on the revenues, and she's looking for what has the school committee done to increase the revenues to the district? That was actually what she was looking for.
Right, and that was gonna be my next comment. So, I know that's not gonna happen tonight, but I do think we need to look at potentially having an activity fee and then raising our athletic fees, specifically because we are adding coaches, we're adding a third, a second trainer, and I consider that above and beyond the operating budget, that we should be carrying that. I mean, I understand FT needs to be in the operating budget, but we need to offset that in some way. So, those are just.
We can put that on the agenda.
Again, discussion for next year's. Yeah. I mean, a week before town meeting.
No, 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 but I mean, the fee needs to happen before, you know, what we're gonna do for next fall, needs to happen before, sooner.
And the fees, and I will say that the fees are significant for families.
I understand that.
Yeah, but, but, let's have a discussion on it. Let's put it on an agenda before July 1.
And the other thing I don't quite understand is exactly what's happening with the rental receipts. Is that supposed to offset some of the operating costs?
That's, that's paying for maintenance costs. We've taken in 37,000. We've used it to cover maintenance costs. We've used all of it we've received so far.
But do I see it in the budget?
No, you don't.
So, I'd like to get a little more. So I'd like to get a little more...
That's a new fund, we'll show it. When we did it in the '25 budget, it had zero, so we didn't have any history yet.
Okay. So just, I feel like we owe the taxpayers a better, we'll have a discussion about, you know...
That's our opinions about the fees that I'll say.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But again, I think it's worthy of being put on an agenda so we can properly vet it. I am, you know, again, I, my objection to this tonight is not the validity of the exercise, but the timing of the exercise. I don't think, I don't think this is something that we can make actionable this evening, and therefore I don't think it's necessary to move forward with it. That's my opinion.
Well, and maybe we can just draw a poll at the committee as to, you know, where you're at. I made my opinion already, is that I, I do not believe I would, I am not going to direct Dr. Hunter to reduce the budget any further. I do, like Mr. Patel, think it is okay to go to town meeting with two different numbers. They are advisory to us. We really tried hard to get to the guideline. We didn't make it. I'm willing to go to town meeting to advocate for those programs. So that's where I stand with it, and I will just, we'll go around the room. Alexa.
I made my opinion made.
Yeah, I support the, I already said this, I support the budget as we've voted on it and as it's been presented.
I don't support the cuts as outlined, I think they're...
Well, can we just, can we just continue around the table? So, Court, Court, I think you've made your opinion.
I'd rather debate what might or might not be possible here rather than at town meeting. I think that doing more than up or down on Dr. Hunter's recommendations would serve this school committee and this school district well. I know I'm in a distinct minority. I don't agree that the timing is late, because I think that the issue has come to a head, and this is our meeting prior to town meeting. It's not atypical to discuss budget, hence it being on our agenda tonight.
Okay, Sharon.
I can understand the concerns around the timing, but I have to say, I do appreciate his effort to, to dive into the budget a little more. I mean, if this is kind of a stalemate, I think this is showing us going above and beyond, and really trying to look at the numbers and show that. So I appreciate this, I support the budget, but I do appreciate the effort, because this is showing us going a little above and beyond. The timing may be off, but, you know, I don't think we should just dismiss this. That's my opinion.
Okay, Cynthia.
I think that some, some of these things should be considered. I know just changing athletic fees, but I just wish we could do a little more work that's not student-facing cuts, that's all.
So then I'll turn it to both Bob and Dr. Hunter, and maybe you want to speak to any of these line items?
I'm going to start, and Bob will take my cue. DEI contract service, that is because we are fully, fully financing the calculus project. The kids are now ages nine, grade nine through 12. We have to fund all of the summer programming. All the grant money is gone. We had a nice donation to work off of. That increase is entirely the calculus project. Great, next. Do you want to do the travel?
The coaching, how many students does that serve?
We're now servicing 25 kids, grades nine through 12. I'm in a meeting tomorrow with Adrian Mims and Andrew and Brian and Katie to look at where we are with that and what they're doing, but the summer piece of that program is not inexpensive, and it's, I believe, a core value that we've prioritized as a goal.
So grant funding's gone on that, and it's also, this is the last year, the pipeline is filled, so it's now nine through 12. Previously, there'd been three grades. The coaches, we've had unified teams added. I don't know if we have fees for those.
There are fees for unified teams.
There are fees, okay.
Which is another core value of our special needs students feeling that they belong at the high school.
Maintenance contract services, maintenance supplies, supplies, materials, those are, those are below the run rates, so we're going to work to manage those costs as best we can. What I budgeted is actually below the run rate of what we're running. The building's getting older. We are running into situations where we can, we just need to repair things, and some of the repairs are expensive. The admin software support is Mozilla, it's a device manager for Apple, and then Zoom hasn't been fully funded in our budget. We had previously, early on, used ESAR funding for that. So those are, you know, in terms of what's on here for cuts, that's one thing I just wanted to address. The other thing, this is my personal view, but I do feel like the, you know, the guideline, there's a couple, there's some different pieces of information we have. I guess in terms of the tax rate impact, the taxpayer's already voted to approve the Concord Public Schools new middle school. So embedded in the 7.9% increase is something that taxpayers have already approved, and feel like it's being pushed back on us as a tax impact. It's already voted on. When it comes to the guideline, I would also say that we have, we've adjusted our numbers previously. Last year, I know, we started higher at CPS, we did come down a bit. I don't recall, I think we made an adjustment to the regional school budget. We reduced our capital last year, we reduced our capital again this year for CPS.
So our capital at CPS, we've reduced $1 million between last year and this year.
And, and so we're the only ones that have moved. We haven't had any, I would say, collaboration from the FinCom in terms of looking at what our situation is. We've presented a lot of numbers, a lot of background, and that, so I just, we'd like to collaborate. And when you look at the guideline this year, you know, enrollment shift is an impact for the region. We're looking and talking about housing developments being, coming online in town in upcoming years that could be more significant in enrollment shift, and I think the FinCom needs to be aware that, you know, we could have a 2.5% increase in a couple of years, and could be a 4% increase in Concord because of, you know, enrollment shift. So enrollment shift's real, and then I also think in terms of just fundamental fairness, like, you know, why do we, why do we count benefits not in the guideline in the town and we count it in the region? So it feels like there should be a little bit more of a conversation about it, and I don't feel like that our part of the discussion is being heard. I don't, just...
I think, just to add on to that, I'm watching colleagues in other districts where they do need overrides, and they're getting support from their finance committees and Select Boards to unitedly go forward for a town-wide override, please fire schools. And I don't know where, we can't even come up with $150,000 together. I'm just confused and frustrated, and I know that showed in the memo, but sometime you got to say what you're feeling, because everybody else is, so.
Yeah, no.
I'm taking hits pretty regularly here about quotes out of context and some other things, and we work really hard to bring responsible budgets, and that should be the premise we're all starting with. And that's eroding, and that concerns me a lot, because that's not, that's just not accurate. And stories are getting told in different, different, different ways. And to go to a FinCom meeting that's fronted with a presentation that is DESI data, you know, finance and performance, and then an accusation that the schools are now not managing the money and underperforming, before I've even opened my mouth, I mean, I almost walked out of the meeting, and I...
And I think with that new data, Mr. Patel is...
Frustrating.
You know, probably eating some crow this evening with our new rankings.
I just hope we can get to a place where we're really talking together, because there are hard conversations currently and more to come, and we're not, we're not doing that right now, and I don't know what happened here. It's gone from, there was always some healthy tension. We're completely like on other planets here right now, and I can't quite figure out why, so.
Lori, that might be my segue for, if we are indeed on other, different planets, is there any way we can continue to show our movement and be who we want to be in terms of the care with which we don't put student-facing cuts in front of people, but look further? For example, the Assistant Superintendent, we have a resignation. Are we going to bring in the new person at a, at a senior salary?
Probably not, well, at a healthy salary.
I just used that as, oh, everything's healthy here. I'm not worried about our salaries, I assure you, but I want them to be high, and I want us to be highly competitive, and I don't think that's ever been a concern.
I mean, my, my second part of that answer is there's other issues that I know are sitting here that need to get funded, that, you know, you may not have quite on the radar yet in it, in that category of administrative salaries. I know there's at least one pretty significant correction that needs to be made, so I'm hesitant to take any money from there. Like every place there's been identified, we would say caution, caution, caution. I wouldn't do that. So I guess I'd hope there's a respect that we have been in these lines deep and thoroughly. We're here to answer any questions. We have been the entire budget process. We're in now month, what, six?
Yeah.
And we've been here, sitting here waiting for this level of detailed questions to come, and they're, they haven't until tonight, but we can answer them all. And the recommendation was my recommendation. I never in any way inferred otherwise. So it's a school committee collaborative decision to make with the administration if, if the FinCom amendment passes at town meeting. Sure. All right.
So what are we doing? I said, what are we doing?
Do we know what the net FTE change is anticipated for next year at the region?
It's at seven, off the top of my head.
The net?
We'd have to pull it, so we've got it.
I think, yeah, there's, there's a few moving pieces. There's an ESAR-funded position that's factored in there, so, and I think we had...
And we'd have to account, I'd want to account for positions that cut this year to help us get through, that didn't even go forward in next year, but anyway, so, a lot of moving pieces.
So that'd be, I think, useful if the question comes up in a larger public forum. You mentioned that high school course enrollments are at least well underway. Has that changed how things are structured?
So Brian mapped, Brian maps the ups and downs by .25 FTE, and he keeps us posted as he goes. And at one point, it looked like we were going to pick some savings up, and then three days later, he was like, "It's going to be a wash." So we have all that backup if we need to share it with you. I think that's operational, and I wouldn't normally share it.
I was just asking if it was structural changes that were then budget-related. That's what's my question.
It's a wash. It's, you know, a quarter of a FTE here and a quarter of an FTE there.
Okay. Have you considered, or would you consider again, a per diem athletic trainer as a second trainer for those days when we have multiple events?
I have a lot of concern over safety of the kids and the number of kids that are participating simultaneously and the supports that they're giving. I think, I think the parts we haven't thoroughly discussed, and Erin Johnkis has quite respectfully brought me these numbers, most of the ADs around us have assistant ADs and much more administrative help, admin assistant, and I think the trainers serve a little bit of assistant AD support as well as all the support they're doing to kids for physical reasons and keeping us and our campus safe and organized and maintaining and managing all the, you know, away games and all that. So I think we're actually understaffed in athletics, which nobody probably wants to hear.
And for probably over 900 kids that participate in athletics, I mean, it's a lot of students participating in athletics. We have high-risk sports, we have high-contact sports. I have watched, you know, when you have to hire a paramedic to be at a high-risk sport, we are, we're spending money on that. I mean, and whether it's a...
Because it's good for kids.
It is good for kids. Well, and it's, that to me is a safety issue. It's a total safety issue, is the athletic training, and the needs are different. And I, and I understand that, you know, I look at just the needs of kids today versus what they were 10 years ago, even five years ago. Kids are different. We have a therapeutic program within our high school that I'm proud of. I'm proud of the fact that we have that. We have a program in our high school that kids can come to, they come out of a hostileization into that program in our high school. Most high schools don't have that available, and I think we're really fortunate for the programs that we have, and we should be supporting the programs that we have, because it makes the whole experience, so whether it's athletic programs or anything else, that is part of wellness, that is part of what we should be providing for students. There are plenty of towns that don't even have an athletic fee, because they value athletics so much, that it's like, you know, we want all of our kids to participate and not have a barrier to participation. So, you know, at this juncture, I think we need to really talk about, are we, you know, I'm not hearing everyone saying like, "Let's really dig into this." I mean, you've answered the majority of these questions here and why you can't take from these line items. If there's any other questions, I would say ask them now, and then I'm ready to move on.
Yeah, I certainly agree with your sentiments about student wellness. I don't think that's really where I was going. I was concerned with the fact that the apparent need for a second trainer happened very quickly with no antecedents, and so I wondered why a full FTE was necessary as the very first response to...
It wasn't. We posted for halftime and had zero applicants.
Two other questions. One, when I did go through the budget, I didn't find the new cost items for the launch program. Are they there? Do we need numbers there?
For the retail space?
Correct.
There's nothing in there. That's going to need to be a discussion with the committee. We're planning it for May.
Okay, okay.
The RFP has been responded to, we've been out at the site. We need to now bring it back to the committee for...
Does it have fiscal '25 implications?
Sure it does, yeah.
So we've got a non-budget?
The intent would be circuit breaker to get us up and running, and then knowing we'd be saving and out of districts and bringing tuition in probably from other districts, we start recouping that, but we haven't made that...
And then finally, I couldn't find public relations in our budget anymore. Is that still there?
Tom Lucy is still there, yes.
I think he shows up in the business office line. It might say communications, but yeah, it's in the administration section of the budget.
There's a new name, okay.
Somewhere in the one, the council.
Tom and I have been in touch three times today, just so we all document the amount of support he gives us, so, pretty important.
You don't, I don't understand.
Well, things, I get a call from a reporter, Tom's my first consult. He reaches out to me about an idea for a story we could get to the newspaper. We've been talking about that today, so the dialogue is multiple times a week for what you would pay a fraction of a PR firm to do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move on from the budget of FY '25 and on to electric bus issues and updates. As you know, we had an incident, I guess I would call it, at Knox Trail, so...
Yeah, and we just wanted to name it so everyone can hear sort of the ebb and flow of operating electric buses, and Bob can chime in at any point. So we have three buses now on the road. We have chargers that aren't really sufficient for the three, so there's multiple times where we're doubling up buses on one charger, and they're not big high-performance chargers, they're, they're smaller. So what they've been doing, this is what the research showed, it took us a while, because the charger overheated and the fire alarm went off. So not, not a fire, but if the alarm hadn't come on, gone off, I'm not sure what would have happened if it had festered any longer. There's a voltage setting in the new buses that we've been lowering so we can do them at the same time and pull a lesser voltage that the charger can handle. In some updates that were made, it defaulted back to the higher voltage, which is what you really want it at, because with the lower voltage, the run rate to charge it means it does one run in the morning, comes back and sits all day, and then does one run in the afternoon. So just so you hear how much those buses are actually operational for us. But the draw of two buses that weren't turned down to the lower charge was too much for the charger, and it turned into a thing. So I guess the point is our infrastructure's not quite even adequate for what we're running right now, and...
Is it like the shared charger with like two hoses off of it type thing versus a one, I mean, for lack of better?
Yeah.
I'm not that technical, but like...
Technically, that's what it is, but that's the idea, the concept.
That's the idea, yeah.
You can charge two from one.
Two at the same time.
Yeah.
So just as we keep talking about the electric buses, just, and I, we're consulting all the time with districts that are trying to figure out how to get their feet in the door here and what the positives and negatives are, and still very much seen as a leader. I always feel like we don't say that enough, but there's infrastructure work to be doing, even right now, not just if we're trying to build the fleet out. And then I just have to name, you know, those buses got back from Vermont 24 hours later. They hadn't even refueled, and all I could, you know, what would have happened if they'd been electric? So anyway, just the what-ifs.
The Teslas had a problem in Vermont.
Come up a little bit too now, anyway, but we are, definitely have infrastructure needs, and whatever we do going forward to expand the fleet, which we all think is a great goal, we're not even there right now.
And is there damage from what happened? Like, did you have to...
I think our crews were able to...
Are we resolved it?
And CMLP came over, so CMLP and our team was able, were able to make repairs enough to make it operational, which was great, because at one point we thought we had to replace it, which would have been a few thousand, $3,000 to $5,000 issue. So we're, we're working through it, and our people are amazing at coming up with the fixes, but, you know, it's still, still a work in progress.
And do we have three or four right now?
We have three, three that are on the road regularly.
Three are on the road regularly, okay.
And are they still on the road, are they back up? And are they still on the road or they back up?
Yeah, yeah. And it comes in, they're off the road a lot too, just so we name that. We get them back up and running, but...
They have improved progressively.
Well, nothing will beat that first one that was literally remade in Canada five times over.
A few years ago, we built out the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Were we fully using that infrastructure?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
We thought that was going to last a lot longer.
We thought three buses would run fine on that, to name your point.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We're also, Dr. Hunter and I are also attending, we're rotating sometimes a regional, I don't know what it's called, but there's a regional group that got the grant funding to look at, excuse me, ways to expand your, or electrify your fleet. And so we participated on those. Well, we actually were panelists on one of the calls.
We thought we were going to learn things and instead we've been panelists three times.
One of the takeaways for me from just the early discussions is the, and just like this issue kind of highlights it, is that you almost need to step back and look at the big picture again and get a roadmap for the infrastructure and figure out what order to do things. So we have a general sense that the infrastructure, that we should have dedicated electrical service just for this to Knox Trail. That's kind of a general sense we have, but we don't, we don't know like how much it needs and we don't know anything more than that. We don't, you know, the chargers, the specific types of chargers, we have an idea that we should get the new charger. We don't, you know, we have a general idea that maybe vehicle the grid works with, you know, but it would be nice to have a little bit more of a, you know, if you're going to do these things, this is how much electrical service you need for how many buses.
Wouldn't the light plant people be able to tell you that?
They could, they could help, but I think you potentially, they're not bus experts, they're electric experts. We'd want to, you know, you know, there's potentially consultants that, you know, we can access through this.
Well, that's what I was advocating. I think the town, the schools need a consultant for electric buses. I don't, it's way beyond, and it shouldn't be your expertise. It shouldn't be. You don't need a full-time person, you know, and I don't think it's within the scope of the sustainability director. You need somebody, you know. It's not his expertise either, so, anyway, that's for another night. All right.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And now on to our action items. All right, we are closing up our meeting. So the first what we have are the changes of the CMS calendar to have PD on February 14th. Do you want to talk about that?
I would love to talk about that. We would like PD, the PD day moved from January to February so that the kids are home and the staff is in to move into the new building.
Oh, great.
So exciting.
And that would alleviate hopefully some of the vacation demand we're going to probably still have, but one full day of moving known now would be really...
Wonderful.
Doesn't that sound great?
Sounds great.
Doesn't that sound great?
Really exciting.
All the teachers to purge.
Yes, I will, I will.
With the high school, it was quite...
Try to move.
Any secret tricks to help them actually do it?
I just tell you, that superintendent was running around like, nope, nope, nope.
Yeah, right, vetting what was going, yeah, yeah. So that's the Friday before the vacation. We would be due to be in the new building. The Monday we open.
Wonderful.
Back from break.
Spectacular. People will love it.
And we know that we can do this because it's been done before at the high school. They moved in over break, so.
After COVID, we can do anything.
Oh, well, after COVID, after, you know, the throw fires, I think you can do anything now.
They left quite a bunch of stuff behind. That was the...
Yeah, which is fine.
It's fine.
It's fine because it just implodes with the building, right?
No, no, no.
Not quite.
We had a big community sale. Remember that?
Yes, there was a community sale, yeah.
The old furniture and everything.
Well, people wanted lockers. I have a friend that has the lockers from the high school, yeah. There are like sentimental things.
Yeah, anyway.
All right, so I move to change the 2024/25 calendar to allocate a PD day on February 14th, 2025 for CMS in lieu of the originally scheduled January 9, January PD, PD day.
And I will second it and this is a CP, oh, I can, it's a CPS vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I can't move it.
I'll move it.
Great.
I'll second it. And this is CPS only.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Now we are on to approving the transfers.
These need to be done in order, Bob, is that correct?
Yeah, if you don't mind reading them separately.
There's motion language and the first motion needs to be read and then the second one. So this is the transfer regarding the amenities building. Anyone like to move that?
And I had it in front of me until I didn't.
I have it.
Great.
I move that the Concord-Carroll Regional School Committee return $200,000 from the CCHS Access Road Capital Project to the Capital Stabilization Fund as these funds are no longer needed for the Access Road project due to it coming together, coming in under budget. Then do I keep going? The second one?
No, just do the first motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Unanimous.
Second one. Okay. I move that the Concord-Carroll Regional School Committee transfer $175,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a new capital project to fund the feasibility and design costs for an amenities building adjacent to the CCHS Lower Athletic Field.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now on to our policies and we're going to need somebody that has that...
I have it. I can't write that. Okay. I move to approve the following policies. Policy JH.
Wait, can you move them?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not the region.
She's not the region.
Oh, so you're just doing regional.
Yep. I moved, okay, so I move to approve the following policies.
Can I just do it?
Yeah, just do it.
It's joint, you both, yeah.
Okay, great.
Just make sure both districts approve.
So it's everything but JDE?
Yes.
Sharon, do you want to do it?
Just moving.
Okay, okay. I move that we approve the following policies as proposed in the agenda.